Thank you so much. I call to order the May 7 Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Council members in attendance include Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Sala Houdin, Fields. Council President Kritzler is online, and I'm Councilmember Stewart. We have nine items on our agenda tonight. And before we get started, I just wanted to recognize that this is Public Service Recognition Week, and we have no fewer than two dozen staff here supporting us through this meeting, and of course, so many other amazing teammates helping to make the city run. So please join me in thanking our amazing staff this week during Public Service Recognition Week. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the Tourism Strategic Plan, and introducing this item is Deputy Director Allen from Planning and Community Development.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Council. This agenda item will be presented by Jackie Layler, our Tourism Program Manager. Today, we are seeking Council's direction to put the Tourism Strategic Plan on the May 21 Business Meeting for a Staff Report. This is Redmond's first Tourism Strategic Plan, and it will provide strategy and direction for various tourism stakeholders for a minimum of five years. With that, I will turn it over to Jackie.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Council. In October of 2023, the Council approved a consultant contract with InterVista Consulting to work with staff to develop Redmond's first Tourism Strategic Plan. This plan is intended to align collective tourism efforts among various stakeholder groups, as mentioned, and serve direction for Redmond over the next five years as a minimum. The development process included broad stakeholder engagement in the form of one-on-one interviews, multiple focus groups, a visioning workshop, a questionnaire, and various stakeholder briefing meetings. This process included in-depth vision discussions and creation, formulating strategic goals and related initiatives, stakeholder feedback sessions throughout the creation resulted in the prioritization of the initiatives. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on April 30, 2024, so just last week. Was that last week? It was. And unanimously voted in favor of recommending the strategic plan for Council's adoption. Again, we are asking for direction from the Council on proceeding to the May 21 Council Meeting for a Staff Report. And at this time, are there any comments or questions you would like answered through the Staff Report on May 21, if proceeding?
Great. Thank you so much. I know there's going to be a lot of interest in this for the Staff Report. So, Council, what questions would you like to see answered in the Staff Report on the 21st? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. First, just some quick little comments. I really appreciated item number 23, which is cultivating more cycling events, since we lost our cycling event that goes along with Derby Days. I was really excited to see this as part of an initiative to bring something back. Also, further down in the packet, Goal 3. Interested in Goal 3, number six, there was a talk of an increase for admin support from the LTAC funding. It didn't really give a number. I know right now it's like 2% or something like that. Curious what that would actually look like, because right now it's a bit squishy. And I know we're all probably pretty interested to see what percentage of that money, because that's a big part of the conversation we've been recently having. The conversation around a visitor center in downtown. I know we have a couple of community members that are really interested in that topic, so if we could engage them, I can put you in touch. But they've got some good ideas around historic and trains and the placemaking that goes into the history of downtown. And then, Goal 4, number 11, the Port of Seattle partnering with them. Love that idea. Recently flew and saw Kirkland ads in the airport, and I was like, Redmond ads, come on, let's do this. We do have one.
It just went up, yeah.
I will look for it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for the study, excuse me, the Staff Report on May 21? Councilmember Sala Houdin?
Not a question right now. I'll be following up with several questions, but for the sake of time, I just wanted to say thank you so much for presenting this. I really appreciate the examples of other cities and looking at what we could, you know, model and also be unique in our own way relative to those. The one point that I did want to just call out is number 18 in the planning considerations specific to improve data and research. Really interested in looking at any models, methodologies, how we're going to look at and acquire data, because I think that could really show us a lot of room for success here. So, really appreciate calling that out, but I'll be following up with questions.
Great. And I'll go ahead and hop in with my three, unless the others have thoughts? Okay, I'll hop in with my three really quickly. I really appreciated the conversation on planning for transportation for residents as well as visitors, and as we are working to convince folks to stay on Friday and Saturday nights here in the City of Redmond, what that looks like. I think it would be helpful to see a map that plots the eight, I believe it is, hotels in the City of Redmond and the neighborhoods where the short-term rentals are densest in proximity to the light rail stations, which is going to be the backbone of our transportation system. Again, just wanting to make sure that we are planning and offering the tools that will need to be a city that successfully produces the tourism numbers we're looking at while integrating folks into the systems that we have currently. So that was one suggestion or thought I had. I also think, and I believe Council Vice President Forsyth mentioned this, one of the proposed changes for the LTAC, I think it would be really helpful at our staff report to just hear, have one collated slide which puts all of the recommended changes for LTAC in one place, so we can really have that conversation together. And we have a couple of new council members since we've had that conversation last. And then, lastly, the org chart on page 20 with the status quo for how we're currently managing the various pieces of tourism in our city. It was, in my mind, missing the, what it would look like if we had a destination management organization. So if you have a visual like that, that would be helpful for us to see, I think, as well. Other questions from the Council? Okay. Thank you so much. I think we're going to have this team stay for item number two. Item number two is approval of the Bullseye Creative Experience Redmond Contract Extension. Deputy Director Allen.
Thank you. This item will also be presented by Jackie. We are seeking Council's direction to add the Bullseye Creative seven-month contract extension to the May 21 consent agenda, and Jackie will explain why we are asking for that.
Thank you. The current Bullseye Creative contract to manage the Experience Redmond Tourism brand ends on June 30 of this year. The draft Tourism Strategic Plan will help inform this contract's scope of work for the next RFP process, and as you heard, we do not anticipate adoption until July. Once adopted, staff estimate needing up to six months to scope and finalize the vendor selection for the Experience Redmond brand management. Due to this constraint, staff are asking for a seven-month extension on their current Bullseye Creative contract to continue managing the Experience Redmond brand at the current contracted rate, which will amount to $104,300 for the seven months. The LTAC met on March 5 of 2024 and unanimously voted in favor of recommending Council approve this contract extension. We are asking for direction from the Council to proceed to the May 21 consent agenda with this topic.
Thank you. And I will just share with the viewing public that we've been joined by Councilmember Anderson. Council, are there questions on this item? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thanks. I'm in favor of this extension. I'm just interested, I know we did an extension not too long ago. Just if you could provide Council with some information of when the last extension was?
We did an RFP six years ago, and we were able to do a first three-year contract, and we were able to do a second three-year contract. We typically go back out to RFP, but because we're in the process of the strategic plan, we are allowed to do an extension in this case with your approval.
Councilmember Fields?
So do we have an agreement with Bullseye to do the extension?
Yes, at the same rate.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, are there any objections to seeing this item on consent on May 21? Okay. Thank you so much. Awesome. Moving on to item number three, this is the acceptance of a 2024 Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant in the amount of $60,000. Once again, introduced by Deputy Director Allen.
We like to bring them in threes. So this agenda item will be presented by Philly Marsh, our Manager of Economic Development. We are seeking Council's direction to put the acceptance of the Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant on the May 21 consent agenda. The City of Redmond has been receiving this grant for $60,000 from the Port of Seattle since 2016, and I will now turn it over to Philly to share a little bit more.
Thank you, Deputy Director, and good afternoon, Council. This grant includes funding for the Startup 425 Program, which is a collaborative entrepreneurship training program of five Eastside cities. Also includes Eastside Made Small Business Market in the Overlake Intercultural District and funding for the Innovation Triangle. These projects are aligned with the strategies outlined in the draft Economic Development Strategic Plan, including supporting small businesses and entrepreneurs and business attraction. No additional or new costs to the city will be incurred through this grant. And again, we are asking for direction from the Council to place this grant acceptance on the May 21 consent agenda. At this time, are there any questions that I may address?
Any questions from the Council? I'll go ahead and hop in with mine. Ms. Marsh, in the past, this grant from the port, we've been able to use these dollars to particularly prioritize businesses owned by women and people of color. And can you just articulate a little bit how these three programs are going to continue with that prioritization in this new grant?
Yes, and that is a criteria of the Port of Seattle. So, the Startup 425 Program, the mission of that program is to reach women and underserved community in starting their business. And then, the Eastside Made Small Business Market helps to support home-based businesses, bring their product to market, and attract those customers to be able to kind of prove of concept and build and expand their businesses. So those are the two areas that mostly align with that criteria set forth.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I know that with the stipulations for this grant, it's a little less than six months that we have to spend it. Do we have any concerns of not being able to spend it in that a lot of time?
No, these programs have already been conceptualized, and partners have already been cultivated for the development of them. So we will be able to spend it within this year. This is a little bit different than the past grant acceptance, so the port did move to a two-year alignment, which is really helpful for that planning purpose. However, that two years did offset cities' biennial budget process, so it actually was a little bit counterproductive. So this one-year grant will then get us back on track with a two-year grant cycle that's aligned with biennial budgeting processes.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful. Are there any concerns with this item going to consent on May 21? Wonderful. We look forward to accepting this wonderful grant. And thanks, team. We appreciate having you. We are going to now move to item number four and invite the other Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development up, to Jason Lynch, to share about MGP 12, Overlake East Master Plan Development Agreement and Phase 1 and 2 Site Plan Entitlements. And this is a quasi-judicial item. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Excuse me. Deputy Director of Planning, Jason Lynch, and I'm joined by our Principal Planner, Tim McCarg. Tim will be briefing 2PW Committee of the Whole on the Overlake East Master Plan Development Project, and he'll be giving a brief summary and the dates that he'll be bringing back to Council. Tim?
Thank you very much. Tim McCarg, Principal Planner. Just want to introduce this project, cover a couple things. One is a summary of the project itself, and then just give a brief overview of what the Type 5 quasi-judicial process means for Council, since it's not common. The project that you have under consideration here is, it's a three-phase project. It's located in Overlake Village at the intersection of 24th and 152nd, so a very prominent intersection within that neighborhood. What's being proposed is a three-phase development. The first phase is a mixed-use building, eight stories. The second phase is also a mixed-use building along with a multifamily building. And then, the third phase is a concept for either a multifamily building or an office building. So there's also a series of site improvements that are proposed as part of that master plan. Includes a very nice public plaza, connectivity through the site, and to the adjacent King County Metro Transit Center. And with that, in conjunction with the master plan, there's also a development agreement application and two site plan applications, one for Phase 1 and one for Phase 2. Those are all packaged up into a Type 5 consolidated permit for your review and consideration and a decision. What that means is that as a quasi-judicial matter, you are acting essentially as judges for the application, and so it limits what you can have in terms of ex parte communication with members of the community, members outside the community, the development team, and so forth. So I just want to caution you that if you, if someone wants to talk to you about this, probably the best response is to say, "Thanks, but no thanks. I can't do that," because that would be ex parte communication, understanding that that's not always polite or possible. If you do speak to someone at the public hearing, the city attorney will ask you to disclose any ex parte communication that you might have had while this has been under Council's consideration. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, team. And my understanding is that we are going to have a Staff Report on May 21, so today we're collecting some questions for you all for that date, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Council, what questions do you have for the Staff Report on this item on May 21? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I noticed it calls out an Overlake urban pathway, and I'm just looking for some clarification. Is that continuation of the cycle track that we currently have going down that?
No, it's actually a separate improvement. So there is the cycle track that will go around the perimeter of the site on 24th and 152nd, but then there's also an urban pathway on the easterly property line that is essentially between this project and the Pixel project. And so that's a, the urban pathway is a system, pedestrian system throughout the entirety of Overlake Village that connects for purposes of shopping, recreation, exercise, so forth. So, yes.
A safer pedestrian pathway?
It is. Yes, that's correct.
And then, I guess the only other thing, well, two other things I'm curious about, business displacement. Just got out of a conversation about this exact topic. If there are anything that they're currently planning to do for business displacement, and if we can get some more maps for the next round?
Of course. Yes, I'll have some nice images.
Great.
I'll go ahead and hop in with my questions, because they build on what Council Vice President Forsyth was asking about. So for the Staff Report, I would be curious to hear if there's anything that Council or the city can do in that decision-making to help encourage more affordable commercial. And at least one of the commercial occupants in that development has relocated. There's some other vacancies, but the building proposed for Phase 3 includes a lot of small businesses owned by people of color, and we would love to not see those displaced. So is there anything that we can do to help encourage the developer to include those tenants in the new development, and are there any tools we're leaving on the table to achieve that? And lastly, I would be curious to hear from the team, and again, since this is quasi-judicial, I have to ask the question, you know, some of these are really detailed questions, but since we're doing it all in public, is the developer aware of the new incentive package for this zone that's going to be adopted with Redmond 2050, and do they have any interest in participating in that in a few months? So I'd be curious to hear more on the 21st on those regards. Yeah, thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah. Are you in a position to give any clarification on schedule? I know it says the applicant would like to break ground spring of 2025. What does that mean from our decision-making process? When, how much time between when they get, if they get approval, to meeting their schedule?
Sure. So...
In other words, what is our schedule?
Your schedule will be a business meeting on the 21st of May, then followed by a study session on the 28th of May to address any follow-up questions that you have. And then, the, I believe...
Public hearing.
We'll have a public hearing in June, I believe, the 3rd Tuesday of June. And Council can make a decision at that public hearing, or can defer it and make a decision at a subsequent meeting. So the goal here is to get this project through Council in late June or early July, which will allow the developer to submit for other permits that are required to start the site work.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina, and then Councilmember Sala Houdin.
Thank you. Spring 2025 is going to be a very exciting time for us in Redmond, along with the light rail extension coming into downtown. Is this going, for our study meeting or the next meeting, questions around the timing of that, and if there's going to be any interruption or any influence of the project and with the light rail coming online?
So let me make sure I understand the impact of this project on light rail operations and function?
No, not on that, but as far as if we're seeing more increase of usability in that area, if it's going to have any impact on it.
Okay. Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sala Houdin?
I have a quick question on the difference in Phase 3, which I believe is the current Macy's Furniture space, in the two options, either built for Building D, either to be a multifamily option or an office option, and just the discrepancy in the gross square footage between the two. It seems like the office building would have a lot more space, and just wondering about that.
So that is a function of the way in our zoning code we calculate gross floor area. There are certain exclusions for residential uses that don't necessarily apply to commercial uses, and so it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison using gross square footage because of those discrepancies in the code.
And then, what's the decision-making process for choosing one or the other?
So the applicant, assuming, let's play out the string, assuming that the master plan is approved with those two options, the developer would then have a choice of submitting a formal application to site plan entitlement application for one or the other, and that would determine the specific mix of uses in that particular phase.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, when you come back, can you provide some specifics on what the word "encourage" means? I mean, we talk about encouraged green building techniques, but I actually don't have a clue as to what that would mean in actual terms, so.
Yes, absolutely. So a couple things there. You know, like I said, there's a development agreement associated with this that's providing certain public benefits. And additionally, this project is taking advantage of the existing incentive program in Overlake, one of which is green building, and so I can cover that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Staff Report on May 21? Okay, looking forward to that much touch base. Thank you so much. Deputy Director Lynch is going to stick with us for item number five, which is approval of a consultant agreement with Matrix Consulting Group Limited in an amount not to exceed $145,000 for the Development Services Improvement effort.
I'm joined tonight with our Process Improvement Manager, which is Todd Rawlings, and he'll be speaking about this. This is to assist the city in their process improvement efforts across the organization. Todd?
Yes, thank you. We are here to get your recommendation to go to Council on the 21 regarding this contract and approval for that. We are going to be utilizing these consultants. They have extensive experience with other cities, and that's why we're bringing them in. They also have extensive experience with things like our EnerGov software that we use to do the permit reviews and approvals. And so that's an area that I didn't, you know, come in necessarily with the experience. We're also going to utilize them to reach across some of the different groups that I've not been able to do yet. So they're going to enhance the work that I'm doing, and so that's why we are asking to proceed with this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the Council? Councilmember Fields?
Maybe my memory is failing me, but I remember this discussion two years ago when we were doing the budget about, I thought that we had decided we were in need of improvements in development services. Is this that, or did we do anything between that point of time and now? Is this a second effort of improvement? I mean, is there any history here that you can help me with?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, you can take that. Okay.
Take that. The process improvement has been an ongoing effort that we continue to do. We're making streamlined processes throughout the organization continuously. The consultant is going to be looked at of looking at a more global approach of consistency on the east side. We're looking at globally what kind of process improvements have been looked at from a consultant standpoint, and we'll be identifying those. The process improvement that we're doing currently right now is streamlining our own internal processes. This is going to look at our systems and our software that we have and utilizing those processes. There's enhancements and updates that we're doing right now with TIS to look at those processes. Do they work for the City of Redmond? Are they benefiting our customers? Is there consistency in the way you apply for a permit in the City of Redmond as in other jurisdictions, trying to get us more in alignment with those type of things? But it is an ongoing effort with process improvement that staff is doing, and this is the next step.
And if I may just add, we did have another consultant group. We've come to you earlier with a different consultant group, but we were not able to come to an agreement on the contract. So we spent a number of months here trying to work with one, and that failed. So now, that's why you're also seeing us come back to you.
Okay, that's actually really helpful, because, and so, what I'm, the skeptical side of me would say, you've been doing things and you're not acknowledging the difficulties or the challenges that you've had. That would be the skeptical side of me. The more opportunistic and positive side of me, and there's, I'm a split personality, is that you're going to leverage off the things you've learned, and you're going to bring those things to bear in this contract and in this work that we're going to do. And I think I heard you say that. Is that a fair statement?
I think it's a fair statement. It's also just to get Council to understand and realize the workload that is out there right now, and making that process improvement at the same time of maintaining the level of getting permits out the door has been a challenge. This consultant is going to help benefit us to help make some of these implementations that we physically can't do right now because of the workload that we're under. It is an attempt, and what we talked about before was a performance measure. We have been working on that. We are reporting out on performance measures every week within the Development Services, so we have a very good timeline. This is the information we'll be providing to the consultant to say, "How do we implement the next step to make us better?"
Great.
So it is a recognition of, if you will, where we fell short in certain areas in making those improvements moving forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes.
And then, just real quickly, are we fully staffed? You said that there's a capacity issue. Is it because there's just a lot of work, or we're short in staff?
So a couple different things are going, people have retired, people have taken jobs. Unfortunately, keeping us fully staffed all the time is difficult, like any municipality. It's not that we don't have the FTEs that we need right now. There are some budget issues that we will address during the budget, but right now, we are short-staffed because of vacancies or retirements.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm very excited hearing from, previously from stakeholders, that sometimes it can be difficult working with us. I'm very excited to see this on the consent agenda and support being there so that we can start on the process of making things a bit smoother. Thank you.
Great. And for posterity's sake, you know, thank you for the detailed memo that went over that this is your second vendor, second choice vendor. Just for posterity's sake, any lingering concerns about moving forward with this vendor? None? Okay, great. Council, are there any concerns with this item going to consent on May 21? We will do that then. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. For item number six, we're going to invite Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, to introduce the amendment to Project Administration Agreement between the City of Redmond and Washington State Department of Transportation for the State Route 520 and 148th Avenue Northeast Overlake access ramp. Welcome, Director Helen.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Councilmembers. Tonight, we're going to be asking for this item to go on consent on May 21, and we're introducing a proposed amendment to the Project Administration Agreement that was between the City of Redmond and the Washington State Department of Transportation that governed the project management... Department of Transportation that governed the project management, construction, inspection, and support for development of the Overlake Access Ramp project. Many of you have probably used it as you've exited 520 to get into the Overlake area. So the project costs associated with the Overlake Access Ramp exceeded costs outlined in the original agreement that is attached to your pocket materials as Exhibit D, as in David, and the proposed amendment will update Exhibit D to reflect the increased cost and allow the city to bill WashDOT for the outstanding balance for the services that we provided. So this is a technical edit to actually, we've already talked to WashDOT, they're prepared to pay us. It's the technical amendment that allows us to bill them and get receipt of those funds.
Thank you, Director Helen. Are there questions from the council? Okay, council, any objection to this item going to consent on May 21st? Okay, thank you so much. And Director Helen, since you're here, we just heard in the last item again how hardworking your staff is, so please thank them for us. There's a lot going on this year, and we appreciate them.
Will do. Thank you. And I also wanted to second what Jason Lynch and Todd Rawlings presented, is we are actually very interested in what that consultant contract and the coordination we have with the consultant on that matter. We've been actively coordinating with One Redmond Government Affairs, Master Builders, and other interest groups and stakeholders who provide, who apply for permits from us, and so we really want to do our best to optimize that relationship, so be in partnership to let, help the development proceed appropriately.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, items number seven, eight, and nine are going to be introduced by the Director of Public Works, Erin Burt. Item number seven is acceptance of grant funding for the Redmond Central Connector Phase Three Construction. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. Erin Burt, Public Works Director. We're asking for consent on the 21st as a package of three grant acceptance for the RCC3 project. One is from the Department of Commerce, one is from the PSRC, and one is a congressional appropriation. The construction award for this project will be coming back to council likely in July or August after we go out to bid here in the next couple of weeks. And council is being asked to accept the grant funding and approve the mayor to obligate the funds by signing the local agency agreements.
Thank you, Director Burt. Are there questions from the council? We love to talk about this item, so Council Vice President Forsyth?
I do indeed love RCC3. Two questions. The money that we're seeing here, is this the money we've been talking about all along, and we're just finally getting to the acceptance phase?
Yeah, the PSRC and the congressional appropriation have been two funding sources that have been on the-
On our radar.
The window radar for acceptance. The DOC was a happy grant that I guess you could say we received due to some transitions within the Parks Department. The visibility on the applying for that grant got a little bit lost as they transitioned with a couple staff members. And then we were just notified not too long ago that we actually got accepted for that grant, so it's a bonus for us for the project.
Well, congratulations on that.
Yeah.
And then the other question, there's a lot of funding that is currently at risk related with the Clean Air federally, that money might go away at some point in the next year or so. Is any of this related to what we've been hearing on that front?
No. From my understanding, once we obligate these funds and basically go into the, after we come back for the construction award, it's locked in, and we'll get allocated those funds, any of those dollars. Yep.
Councilmember Fields?
The $8,075,000 estimate for RCC Phase Three, how, when was that done? How old is that estimate?
You know, I don't have that in front of me, but I can find out. But everything that we're tracking right now through our last project steering committee is that we're on track to complete it within budget.
I'd like to know when-
When the original estimate was done?
When that estimate was done.
Sure.
The $8 million estimate. Great.
Happy to get that for you.
Micah? Hi, hello.
Hi, yeah, just chiming in on that. I think the $8 million was probably an early estimate, the beginning of the project. Our current estimate for construction is a lot less than what was originally anticipated, so that's why we're seeing the higher number there on the original estimates.
Thank you for that.
We'll get that clarified.
Okay, I appreciate that, Director Burt. Thank you, Micah. Are there any other questions from the council? Any objections to this item going to consent on the 21st of May? I'll just add one last thought, which is, it's always fun when the big projects get their way to Public Works. Like, by the time we're hearing about them from Public Works, it means the fun stuff's really coming online, so thank you for your, please thank your team for us. We really appreciate them. Item number eight, again with Director Burt, is the addition of the 156th Avenue Shared Use Path Project to the 2023-2028 Capital Investment Program.
Yeah, so the next two items are going to be a two-for-one. We need to add a project back into the CIP, and then the second component is accepting a grant so we can begin to do some design on that project. So the 156th Avenue Shared Use Path was originally in the CIP back in the 2021-2026 CIP, but at the time, it was taken out because we thought these improvements, this creation of the cycle path, was going to be done by private development. When that fell through, we went looking for initial design dollars to get that back onto our CIP list due to the fact that we want to continue to build out that cycle infrastructure in the Overlake area. So we applied for a PSRC grant in the amount of just about $700,000, almost, excuse me, $800,000. We were awarded that, so what we need to do is add this project back into the CIP for this biennium, so then we can begin the design work, get those dollars obligated, and then we will be coming back as part of the '25 to '30 budget process to add the complete project into the CIP moving forward. Asking that this goes on to consent for the 21st.
Great. Council, are there questions about adding this item to the CIP in order to receive some grant funding for this? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Clarification, the map, it's hard to tell. Is this on the Microsoft side of the property, or is this on the residential side?
It's on the residential. It's the east side.
Continues the Microsoft path?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I forgot my other question. I'll come back if I remember it.
Councilmember Fields?
So who was the partner that decided they didn't want to do it, or the private interests, as you put it? And why? Why did they?
I don't have that information for you off the top of my head, but I can get it for you.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just to clarify, how many cycle paths are in the City of Redmond?
I don't know.
None yet?
Not off the top of my head.
All right, thanks.
Other comments or questions from the council? I'm just going to add in a couple thoughts. I'm happy to see this added to the CIP so we can move this forward. I was having a conversation with a colleague just the other day about access for those residents who live closer up on 51st and having more access to light rail, and I think that this bike path is going to further the micro-mobility options for folks in that neighborhood. It's like just uncomfortable enough to walk for some folks, but this is going to be really helpful. So I'm very much in favor of us continuing to pursue this. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I think you and I were actually having that conversation.
Yes, we were.
Yes, I used to live down that hill, down 51st, down Tosh, towards East Lake Semamish, and curious where in our CIP cycle track towards, down towards the cycle track that connects into Marymore Park comes into play, because this is a very critical path, and it was one that I took often, and I rode in the middle of the lane because it was the safest option. So excited to vote for this, but just looking at continuing out that plan, I know that that additional down that hill will be a critical addition to make this a fully fledged way to get around.
I'll get with staff, and we'll see where that lays for you, get some of that information. You bet.
And maybe a good item for the next update to the Transportation Improvement Program. The TIP for the new councilmembers, if you haven't experienced that yet, is if something's on the list, that means we can pursue grant dollars for it. So it's good to have things like that that are high priority on the list. Okay, so moving forward, council, are there any objections to seeing this item go on to consent to, excuse me, add the item to the CIP on May 21st? Seeing no objection. Are there any objections to accepting the grant funding in the amount of $770,000 and change for the grant to pursue the shared use path on 156th? Councilmember Fields?
Back to your other point, what are we doing on the 21st? We're adding this-
We're doing two actions for one shared use path. We need to put it in the CIP so that we can accept the grant dollars.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any objections to either of those?
Well, normally, we do a budget, a CIP budget, but I guess I can see that this needs to be done before that, so no.
Okay. Seeing no other objection to that, we'll go ahead and add that to consent on May 21st, and maybe that's a good spot to pick up. We had actually intended, and the reason we're finishing a bit early today, team, is because we'd actually intended to have a check-in on the CIP, the current CIP, in this session. It didn't make it onto the page. That's totally fine. So you have in your email from Director Burt the last quarter update on the CIP. It integrates all that new feedback that we gave recently, and for those who've been on the council for a while, bringing back the color coding system. So that is in your inbox. Feel free to send questions toward Director Burt. I already saw a response today and in response to my top three questions. And then I think moving forward, the intent would be, the materials are going to be provided in a somewhat similar format to the council, and we'll have a few minutes to check in on any questions in this time. That way, the public's having a chance to read the slides and stuff, too.
That's correct, and I do want to add two things. One, your question, Councilmember Forsyth, I was reminded by my good colleague over on the dais. The integration, the issues about bike lanes and those connections will be coming back a little bit later on, part of the Transportation Master Plan. That will be coming in front of council. And then, Councilmember Field, so the, putting the project back into the CIP, and then the acceptance of the grant dollars just gives us the authority to begin the design contract here in 2024. And then we'll be seeking the additional funding to build the project in the CIP process that you'll see as part of this year's budget process.
I understand.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Wonderful. With that, we've reached the end of our agenda. Thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening. Bye-bye.